Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm a big fan of technology, and I should record this because I have to say it each time, but here we go. I'm going to read it again.
I'm going to shut this off.
Adequate notice of public meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975. This meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on May 15, 2018, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of May 18, 2018. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met on May 15, 2018. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 11, 2019?
Motion.
So we got a motion from Mr. Bruno, I heard first, and...
Second.
Second is by Mr. Corolla. Any discussion?
Nah.
Shaun, can you do the roll call for me?
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Kelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavine?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sotera?
Yes.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes. Communications, communications aren't filed in the office of the Board Secretary. And Mr. Sampson, I'd like to yield the floor to you for your superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Acetola. So, a number of items to just update the board and public about. Obviously, the hot topic currently is the school funding and the state aid issue across the state of New Jersey with the implementation of S-2, which is fundamentally altering how districts are funded currently. So, I've said it a number of times here, Freehold Regional High School District is on the opposite end of S-2, where our state aid is being reduced by about $25 million over the ultimately six-year phase. And we are structurally intact for next year, but we are moving our reserves to a dangerous level to cover that for one year. And there is an awful lot of conversation and action and advocacy taking part across the state to make sure that folks with any legislative influence or power have an understanding of what the other end of S-2 looks like. And so, first and foremost, we've held continuously to this, and I delivered testimony to the Senate Ed Committee in 2017, saying as such that the funding formula itself is inherently flawed. And it is flawed because the growth in property value and income has not kept pace with the state's determination of what we are eligible to pay. So, perfect example, this year's budget, our income across the region went down by half a percent. So, our overall income went down about half a percent. Our equalized value went up 4%. The state's determination of our ability to pay went up 8.3%. Right? That doesn't make sense, right? Well, it makes sense if you are targeting property-heavy districts in a way that is fundamentally different than what's occurred in the past. So, there's an awful lot of conversation and meetings that are taking place to address this, particularly from the 100-plus school districts that are really facing some dramatic reductions over the next couple of years. And I want to be clear and state publicly that there were a number of districts across the state that were severely underfunded for a period of years, Freehold Borough, K-8 being one of them. And those districts deserve every penny of the funding that they receive, because they have been underfunded. It's not a zero-sum game of winners and losers. Our position is that no child in New Jersey should be educated at the expense of another child in New Jersey. And so, we joined a group known as SOS, which is Support Our Students. There are 71 districts involved with that. Folks may have seen during the Governor's Budget Address, that group brought about 4,000 individuals down to Trenton. But there are an awful lot of other advocacy avenues taking part out of that group. And so, I'm on the Legislative Subcommittee of that group, and we've met with cabinet members from Governor Murphy's office to make the point about what S-2 looks like in our district and in other districts. We have met with the lead officers from New Jersey School Boards to discuss what their advocacy efforts look like for all districts with S-2. We are providing testimony, so I'll be testifying to the Assembly Ed Committee on Wednesday morning in Trenton, making the case once again very clearly about where we feel Freehold Regional High School District is positioned in all of this. Mr. Boyce and I have prepared briefing packets that clearly explain the funding situation to all local legislators and local municipal officials, so they understand the context of what the funding means for Freehold Regional High School District. We went down and I spoke at, with the members of the Republican Caucus a couple of weeks ago in Trenton, who issued Every Child Counts, which is the counterproposal to Sweeney's Path to Progress and S-2. And one of the things that was included in their proposal was fully funding extraordinary aid across the district. And so, extraordinary aid is received for the students who are your neediest students who cost the most to educate. And so, it would make sense that the state would support those individuals to a higher degree, because there's more costs associated. So, what's happened, though, over recent years, where that fund has been funded as high as almost 80% within the past decade, last year it was funded at 56%. That is a $2.5 million shortfall for Freehold Regional High School District. So, on top of the aid reduction, a $2.5 million shortfall in extraordinary aid, on top of that, right? That's in conjunction with that. So, there's an awful lot of conversation around the state about fully funding extraordinary aid, and we obviously support that. That is a dollar-for-dollar trade for us that would alleviate some of the reductions that are coming. And so, we've advocated for fully funding extraordinary aid. And there was a terrific special education task force with the then-executive director of the Garden State Coalition helped chair that came out in 2015, that made a number of these recommendations that are both in Sweeney's Path to Progress and in the Republican Every Child Counts bill. So, if you read the special ed report that's been out there for four years, it's a roadmap on how to better fund some of these items. I attended Sweeney, Steve Sweeney's Town Hall at Monmouth University last weekend to hear what that looks like. Obviously, Senator Gopauw and Senator O'Scanlon were there as well. A lot of conversation on regionalization, and they want to ultimately, you know, the argument is that no K-6s or K-8s should exist, that every district should be a K-12. We make the point that we're the largest high school regional district in the state, and we're already regionalized, serving eight different communities, and we've reached an economy of scale through doing that. Our per pupil average of like districts is $3,000 less than the state average. And our per pupil spending is not far off from some of those districts that were decimated as underfunded districts over the past decade. So, that's, our argument is, how can you decimate us when we're spending very similarly to these districts that were underfunded, because we are so efficient because of our regionalization? So, Senator Gopauw's office with Assemblywoman Downey has introduced some specific legislation relevant to the Freehold Regional High School District's plight. I don't know if any of those bills have legs in the legislature, but it certainly is out there to try and offset some of the financial difficulties that are laid out with S-2. But the crux of all of this is the funding formula itself needs to be reexamined. And that's the point that we've held for a number of years here, and is still obviously clear. A couple other items to go through tonight, you know, we'll be, we've decided that we're going to move forward with the referendum. We're reframing what those questions look like. We're going back to the state to make sure that the PECs are accurate and what they need to be. There's a lot of conversation around that, and I'm sure it'll come out in the Finance Committee report, but from our perspective, you know, this district has allowed millions in banked cap to expire. We have not always gone to the 2% cap. We have the past several years, absolutely. We did an energy savings improvement plan where we bonded ourselves to the tune of approximately $20 million to do a lot of nuts-and-bolts things in this district, HVAC and the like, lighting. And we have also been incredibly efficient. We've waited until our debt is off the books for the construction of Colts Neck High School to move forward with this referendum, so we're utilizing two-thirds of that funding to be repurposed into the schools, and a third to go back and direct tax relief to the taxpayers. We think we've been incredibly responsible. When we put that referendum back up for vote during Election Day in 2019, we're going to categorize it in multiple questions in order to make it perhaps more palatable to folks who may have strong objections to some things that are in there. But the first question is going to be a significant amount of work that is going to have to happen in this district regardless. And that work, while we're on this funding path, is going to cannibalize the academic programs for our students unless it gets done in some other way. So, we'll be messaging that strongly over this summer and into the fall, and meeting with our municipal officials in particular over the summer to really sit down this time to explain the circumstances of where we are and what we're trying to do with the referendum. So, we're moving forward with that, and I'm sure there's more that might come out in the Finance Committee report. The budget that we're adopting tonight, and you know, this is what we do every year, it's simply the budget we send to the County Office for Technical Review. The formal budget presentation will be April 29. Between now and then, the board will receive the detailed budget briefing book that Mr. Boyce prepares every year, that will outline the budget in much greater detail. Tonight, we are adopting the technical budget, and I do want to reiterate that we will be whole for another year. So, we have a year to get off of the path that we're on. And I think that we're also suing the state. I left that out. There's nine districts that are suing the state, and we are going to drill down to how this is all funded. And I think when we really are able to uncloak that, it's going to be a story that folks across the state might be embarrassed to see how we determine how money is deployed across the state. And we're not going to go away. And the districts involved, and the districts in this particular area, when you get Freehold Regional High School District, and Toms River, and Brick, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of people and tens of thousands of students. And so, there's a leverage point there to hopefully make change when those districts are going to be decimated as a result of the funding. So, a few other items. Just proud to say that I was named to the CTE Advisory Council for the state. For a number of years, there was only one sitting superintendent on that council. There's now three of us, so a larger voice there. County Vocationalists have a, you know, sort of a paid advocate that's there, and there's a number of business institutions from across the state that are represented there. So, it's a good place to be to have some ground-floor conversation about career and technical education in the state of New Jersey, and I'm proud to have been named to that Advisory Council.
Yay!
I wasn't expecting applause. It's nice. Couple other things. Our Q-SAC evaluation. So, Q-SAC, remember, you're scored, it's the way that the state monitors school districts. It is, there are five different components to it. You're scored up to 100 points in each of those five components. And you have to score at least an 80 in each of the five components to be designated a highly effective school system, right? So, we have always been a highly effective school system, because we've always usually scored 100 across the board, I believe, in all five categories. And this year, we scored in four of the five categories, 100. In instruction and program, we scored a 79.2, 78.9, so, you know...
Eight tenths of a point.
Right. We're eight tenths of a point off of being highly effective, largely due to park refusal rates. Now, anybody who's followed park implementation know that it has been disastrous at best. And so, I have fired off a letter of appeal to the Department of Education, where the argument that we've made is, during this time period, you provided multiple pathways for students to graduate. And we cited all the different broadcasts that we received, and then we said, and as a matter of fact, a number of our students took advantage of those pathways, and here's our PSAT and SAT scores to demonstrate where they met graduation requirements rather than sitting for the park exam. So, how then can you reduce points for us when we've provided all these other pathways, which you clearly, based on all of your communications, said was an appropriate pathway for our students to follow? We'll see where it goes, but it's a difficult position to be in, and unfortunately, it's my belief that it was embedded into Q-SAC as a way to require compliance, as a way to make kids sit for the test, as a way to make school districts pressure kids to sit for the test in another avenue. And so, you know, we had a fairly significant refusal rate in this district, largely because a number of students met their requirements through other means. So, we'll see where it goes, but as it sits right now, we have 104 or five categories, and 79.2 in the fifth, and we'll see if we can't find 0.8 somewhere for the SAT and PSAT work in the district. And it just came out today, interestingly enough. You know, obviously, park was deemed unconstitutional as a graduation requirement a couple months back. There's a lot of consternation about what does that mean for students, and the state reached an agreement with the Education Law Center, where they allowed a pathway for current seniors and juniors to have to a graduation. There's a lot of conversation around, what do we do with juniors? Who sits for the exam? So, the state came out today with guidance that said, any 11th grader who has met their requirements through another way does not need to sit for the exam, right? So, it's, we were talking about earlier, the irony there is, the federal requirement is an 11th grade assessment, yet that's where we're not taking it. So, I can't, the park implementation has been one of the largest boondoggles in the history of New Jersey public education. It was so poorly implemented and crammed down the throats of the public in New Jersey that unfortunately, the large, long-term impact of that is to really set us backwards for like a decade as the state figures all this out. Because state's in a tough spot now to draw down from park, because they do need, there's a federal requirement for a standardized assessment there at the high school level, and what that looks like is very difficult work moving forward, moving out of this park stuff. What I do, what I'm concerned may happen is that the assessments that replace that are going to look very similar to park, and just be named something else. I'm not sure. But, you know, it's been a, it's been a big circle that I think is, it's been an unfortunate outcome for public schools, because those of us who were here during implementation, the time, the money, and the distraction that implementing it caused us as a school district and school districts across the state came at the expense of really focusing on educating our kids. You know, it was all compliance-driven. I even kept a chart one year where I tracked all my assistant principals, sort of like soft hours devoted to this, and it was ridiculous. And so, the news about the 11th grade is significant, because that will allow the testing window to be much shorter here in the district this year as well, and minimally disrupt the stuff that we're supposed to be focused on on a daily basis, which is the teaching and learning in the classrooms. And then, just a couple other quick notes. Teen Driver Safety Programs are well underway across the district. That's a terrific program. Our college planning presentation with Peter Van Buskerk happened last week for grade nine and 10, and he does a great job where he, you know, sort of helps ninth and 10th grade parents through the early stages of the college application process and what that might entail. And on March 5, we had our Valentine's Day Dance at Manalapan High School, hosted by our peer leaders there for a number of our special needs students across the district. And we provide some wonderful opportunities to bring all those students together several times a year across the district. And so, that happened on March 5. And that concludes my report, Mr. Acetola.
No, that's for you. Mr. Sampson, thank you so much for being so involved in so many of these different issues. I sent you one of my famous emails, I think about 1:30 in the morning regarding park, and we actually were on the same page. I think it's a ridiculous assessment. And one of the best ways, I feel, to assess a school initially is the way I used to assess housing projects. The first thing you do is you go walk around, and you see how orderly things are. And I don't think that our high schools could be more orderly. They're wonderful. I know a student that graduated the MedSci program, and he told me that, pretty much verbatim, med school was easy. I learned all that stuff at the MedSci program. So, we want to keep it that way. We can't have these kind of cuts. The reason that I moved to Colts Neck probably 20 years ago, yes, it was 20 years ago, 21 years ago, is because I was told that the schools were great. My son went to Biotech, but he went to K-8 in Colts Neck, and it couldn't have been better. And I am just so proud of our schools. Right now, we have on my own block eight houses, of which three are up for sale. The best thing that taxpayers could do to keep the value of their homes is to keep the value of the education in Freehold Regional. So, anything that the members of the public can do to campaign to do that will pay for itself, pulling a number out tenfold. I want to see these schools. And we owe it to the kids to begin with, that everything is done with integrity and the school systems are run properly, and I see that all over. Mr. Braverman, you have to invite me to your school. I haven't been there yet.
Oh.
Okay? Good. We'll do it next week. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could I ask Mr. Sampson something?
Of course.
Pertaining to his report. Mr. Sampson, I have a question for you. I saw something that, like, these really prestigious, upper-end, private schools were doing away with AP. And I guess they had an issue with too much test, teaching to the test going on. So, I'm just curious, why are they really doing it? And could you explain how come the way we do things is better, the fact that we have our offering of AP classes?
Yeah, so, interesting article, right? I think that the overall message of that article was, they may have moved away from it, but it's still the great equalizer for a number of kids. And having a conversation with some of the admins here, one of the things that we went round and around about is, you know, elite places want to find ways to stay elite. And if a number of kids are suddenly taking an AP course that, now all of a sudden, you know, more and more kids are taking AP, and lo and behold, that means more and more kids are passing AP exams and as such, I think it erodes their position of elite, and I think there's some of that going on there. Our perspective on the AP examinations has been, and always, and so, I taught AP United States History myself. I read for the exams for seven years, knew it inside and out. I never taught to a test, you know? I certainly taught skills and conceptual thinking that was required to do well on that test, but there was no way that I was ever teaching to a test, and nor do I think our AP teachers feel that they need to teach to a test. I think they need, they believe strongly that they are teaching students very specific skills to do well across the continuum. So, we believe strongly that more kids can be afforded those opportunities and can do well. I think that there is a natural winnowing effect. Somewhere along the line, it became more about, I got mine and you can't have yours, rather than we could all do a little bit better. And I think that some of those schools that moved off of AP exams, I think there's a little element to that. I believe strongly that it is, it can be done powerfully well for a larger number of students. And I do believe in terms of opportunity, support, access, and then ultimate long-term outcomes, it's a good process for any student that's willing to engage in it. And I think that too often in our schools, we draw artificial boundaries to make artificial cuts of certain kids so that we are more elite. So, that's my politically incorrect answer, but I believe that that's what happens.
Well, one more thing that is real is, this district has just put in an IB program, which specifically has a different philosophy than the AP program. So, there's a lot of opportunity for thinking in that, and I'm very, very pleased that it was a lot of extra work. It caused a blocked scheduling, and the district took the initiative to follow that. So, there's a lot of opportunities now that are going on in the district. Let's move on to board reports. And we have three on the agenda. Mrs. Howell, you're going to come up next month with the curriculum, because we haven't met on that, and instruction. We have a finance that I'd like Hashi Moses to talk about, because you called me earlier on that, and I know you're quite articulate on this one.
Okay. I met with Shaun today to go over the bullet points of the Finance Committee. There were six major points. One, we came to an agreement about the lacrosse program at Manalapan, which is basically going to be run like the hockey program is run in our district. Then we had capital projects, the air conditioning in Manalapan High School in the auditorium. We're the only auditorium right now that doesn't have air conditioning, so we want to take care of that. And at Marlboro, the boilers, actually, there's three of them in the main building, they're at their breaking point, so we have to take care of that. Architecture, the architect is going to submit plans to the DOE for that. We talked about the structure of the referendum. The referendum was voted down last time, which still blows my mind that people do not, I don't think they understood what they were voting on or mixed it up. So, this time, in the referendum, which by the way, is going to be done on November 5, which is the election day, which means we're not paying any extra cost to have it on a different day or anything like that. It's going to be broken down into three areas. So, the general public can vote yes on one or no on another one. They have three separate votes, okay? The first one deals with security, which basically deals with interior door locks and vestibules in the PA system. I don't know how anybody can vote that down. The second one deals with, oh, by the way, I'm sorry, the first one also deals with roofing and paving, and the auditorium renovation at Freehold High School, because their auditorium was destroyed in a storm, and basically only about two-thirds of it can be used right now. The second one area deals with such items.
Would you like me to do the report?
As bleachers. Who said that?
That was me.
Was that you, Michael? No, I think I can handle this, Mike. I appreciate it, though.
But you weren't at the meeting.
Mike, I thought I said in the beginning of the report that I took my time out today and had a special meeting with the BA about what happened at the meeting.
I got it.
Oh, you got it now? Good. I'm glad. Okay. So, the second item deals with bleachers. Okay, so, um, the, uh, the second item deals with bleachers, um, which basically, if you've ever sat in the bleachers at the football games, we don't believe they're the safest things possible. Um, also deals with STEM, um, areas. And then the third item deals with, um, turf field, which was up for Freehold Township, Menalupin, and Marlboro. These items, like I said, can be voted on separately. Uh, we sincerely hope that the public takes time to read the items and, and understand what they're all about. The next thing deals with, uh, two RFPs, uh, Quester Proposals are underway for Property and Casualty Insurance Broker Services and this Food Service Management Company Services. And we believe that both RFPs will be awarded before the end of this school year. Mike, did I leave anything out?
Uh, yeah, if you don't mind.
I certainly do not.
Okay. Um, just so everybody knows, because we're going out with, uh, to spend a lot of money and borrow money, so with respect to the boilers, that's going to cost $748,000. The air conditioning units at Menalupin, we're going to be spending almost $846,000. And then with respect to the referendum, way back when, the one that went down to defeat was almost 40 million. So, with the three questions that are out there, that first question, for the PA systems, the roofing, paving, et cetera, that's going to be most of it. That's going to be 20 million. Question two, STEM rooms and bleachers is 12 million. And then that last question, with the turf fields and the, uh, media center and auditorium in Borough, that's going to cost eight and a half. So, um, and question one has to be approved. That we can't just approve two and three. So, you can't just get STEM and fields without spending the 20 million on the security and the roofing and paving.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Uh, the money amounts for each item that Michael brought up, are they going to be on the referendum?
Yes, so, let me just weigh in on this. Uh, the, the scope of work of the referendum that failed in October will remain substantially the same. Uh, one exception is the boiler replacement at Marlboro. We're not willing to, um, go through another winter because of the condition of those boilers. So, we're going to, and it's, uh, included on tonight's agenda, um, use money that we have in capital reserve to fund that project. Uh, the Menalupin HVAC work in the auditorium was included in the current year's budget, so that's already provided for. So, the, the Marlboro boilers was included in the referendum in October initially. So, outside of that, uh, the scope of work remains substantially the same, except as Mr. Sampson pointed out, um, it's, it's going to be broken into multiple questions, so that community can vote on each question individually. Importantly, passage of question number two and number three are contingent upon number one passing. So, number one are those things that by and large will happen one way or the other. Uh, roofs, paving, security upgrades, those are things that the district's going to move forward to. Um, and, uh, the, the referendum and the annual school budget and the state aid situation have merged into the same critical elements of the district's overall financial position. And they, that, that comprehensive view of it will be presented at the public hearing on, on April 29th. Uh, we have, um, or will, once we have authorization through tonight's resolutions, submit information to the Department of Education, because, uh, they, um, will pick up a portion of that. We went through that process for the last referendum, and we'll need to go through that again. The preliminary eligible cost documents that, uh, Mr. Sampson referred to earlier, um, once we have that back, we'll understand better what portion of the referendum will be funded by the state and what portion will be funded by the taxpayers. Um, the last time we did this, which was last year, roughly 30% was funded by the state. So, it was a, it was a, a full, um, full, uh, partnership between the district and the state as far as funding that. So, I really think that, uh, all three of these pieces need to be considered together. Uh, that's going to be part of my report to the board and also the public hearing on the 29th. But generally speaking, structurally, same scope of work by and large, um, and split out into three distinct questions.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Boyce?
Certainly.
When you say in that last piece about part being borne by the taxpayers and part being borne by the state?
Yes.
The state, that, those monies are still coming from taxpayer dollars. Is that, is that correct, or like, state monies from everyone in the state in New Jersey?
Yeah, well, it's, I, yes, it's from their budget. It's from the state budget. But they support it through debt service aid, is what they call it. So, it's, uh, an annual appropriation to offset a portion of the debt service aid for the bonds that the district issues, uh, upon passage of the referendum in order to get the money to do the work and pay it back over 20 years.
So, people felt that they, it was like a double dipping, taking from a right pocket versus left pocket? That's not exactly accurate from what you're saying?
No, I can't, I can't speak to the, the state's revenue collection and allocation process, but I do know that we, as we did last time, can make application for them to offset a portion of this project specifically.
I, I think you might also maybe inform them for every dollar that goes to Trenton, what, what comes back? Seven cents? You know, so, that might sit better as a, as an example to, it's a return on investment with the debt service aid with some of those folks that might, might view it that way. It certainly is, it certainly comes from the state, but, um, at least it's coming to the, the community rather than going abroad across the state somewhere else.
That's helpful. Thank you.
The current, the, yes.
Could you explain to me, I, I know we discussed it before, I should know this, but I'm having a senior moment. Why are we doing the three separate?
Uh, we, we saw these as, as really three distinct groups of projects. And, you know, the, given that it's essentially the same scope of work as the original referendum, uh, and some of the feedback that we've heard from the community after the October, um, election where that referendum didn't pass, uh, we felt that this was another approach, um, that would allow the community some, um, opportunity to make more specific selections.
No, I, I understand that. I just think it's hard for Mr. Taxpayer who doesn't want to vote for us in the beginning. I think it can be a little confusing to them.
Well, we will.
Especially if, especially if one has to pass, like, if someone has to pass, I mean, like, someone who doesn't really know which way to go out and vote, or PA regulations that we're going to do, um, you just have to.
Understood. We're going to make considerable effort to, to be very out and about and talking to groups, uh.
Right. Let me, let me interject. The, so, the, the feedback from the last question was that the one question of everything grouping was actually confusing to folks. So, they, people in, in very particular areas of the different communities, and this is part of the, part of the price of doing business with eight different communities, felt very, there was very different feelings towards certain elements of the referendum, depending on what community it was. And folks were very passionate about that. And, and so, a lot of the feedback that we got was that, "I would have voted for this, but I didn't want to vote for that." And so, we think we're actually going to bring a lot of clarity to the taxpayers, because it's going to be spelled out across the way. And if somebody doesn't, wants to vote no, then they'll vote no, you know, on, on any of that. Um, but I, I think that the, the feedback that we received was, people were, there was some confusion, and I'll use your community of Hal as an example. So, folks in Hal said to us, "Well, we paid for our turf field. Why would we pay for a turf field?" And we said, "No, that, you know, it was done in our operating budget, because the need was best here, but let's be clear, that the taxpayers are paying for both. It's not, it's not one or the other, and it wasn't, uh, wasn't a show." So, there was confusion there about that, as, as an example. That just, that was a particular, that was a couple of folks from Hal that reached out to us. But that was different in each of the communities with some of the different projects, and, and there were some really passionate feelings about that. And so, we thought it would be best to chunk it in a way that might make more sense to larger groups of folks to be able to take a look at what those categories might be.
Mr. Sampson, could you elaborate then on why it's two or three is contingent on one, and why it's not, you know, vote on one, or vote on two, or vote on three?
Is that going to be explained on the ballot?
Yeah.
It will be said that.
Yeah, so, the, the.
One has to be passed.
Right. Because the first, the first, yeah, the first question is, is the high priority items that need to be done, not necessarily immediately, but in the very near future. That is work that is going to occur regardless. Do we need to modernize some of our classrooms and buildings that are 80 years old? Absolutely. Will we exist as a school system without that? Yes. Are we going to be able to not pave the roads ultimately? No. And so, we prioritize the stuff that needs to be done as the first question, and, and that's the, the absolute need to. And we're trying to be even more clear to the taxpayers about how we're doing that. This is the stuff that has to absolutely get done, or we can't function. The other stuff, we feel very passionately about for our school system, but we, but we can put that off longer than that first question stuff.
But if one doesn't pass, but two passes, and maybe three also can pass, nothing happens?
Correct. That's correct.
If they're all going to pass, so I'm not even worried about it.
I hope so.
Sure hope so.
Thanks.
Okay, the, uh, next committee report has to do with policy. So.
Ms. Frankhauser has it.
Ms. Frankhauser, I know you volunteered to do that one.
So, the policy committee met on February 26th, and we discussed the five policies that are on tonight's agenda for first read. Um, my understanding is that none of these policies have any financial impact on the district. Policy number 2422, Health and Physical Education, is an existing mandated policy, being amended to remove reference to the core curriculum content standards and replacing those references with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Policy 2431.3, Practice and Preseason Heat Acclimation for School-Sponsored Athletics and Extracurricular Activities, is an existing recommended policy. When this policy was adopted in 2012, the board relied on the NJ, uh, the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association preseason heat acclimation guidelines, which continue to be filed in the district. The current policy changes reflect those recommendations and the inclusion of school-sponsored activities beyond just athletics, such as band, that take place outdoors during warm weather months. Policy 2610, Educational Program Evaluation, an existing mandated policy, is being amended in compliance with New Jersey CUSAC. The language changes refer to the use of multiple sources of data for monitoring student achievement and progress, and in evaluating our program effectiveness. Policy 5330.04, Administering an Opioid Antidote, is a mandatory new policy that's being put into effect, um, in accordance with state law on the emergency administration of an opioid antidote to students, staff, or other persons deemed to be experiencing an opioid overdose. The policy addresses the mandates to have the antidote accessible in a school building during regular school hours and during school-sponsored events in or on school grounds, and permits the board to make the antidote available at off-campus events. The policy provides for training of appropriate staff to administer the antidote and for safeguarding it. State regulations will be forthcoming, which may affect our regulations, but the policy is mandated, notwithstanding those pending regulations. Finally, Policy 5756, Transgender Students, is an existing mandated policy, being amended at length to be consistent with current state laws and regulations. And the policy committee will be meeting next on April 2nd at 5:00 PM here, District Administration Building.
Amy, thank you.
Michael.
You have, uh, let me speak into the mic. I, I know you're an attorney, and, uh, you're quite qualified to talk about the policies a lot more than I am, because I would kind of drift and not pick it all up, and, you know?
Aye.
I speak from a general standpoint on things, but you were very specific. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
We have no public participation tonight, so I'm missing my favorite part of the meeting, as Hashi would say, right? So, may I have a mo, oh, one more thing. Uh, there was an, uh, addendum to the agenda, and Sean, could you present that?
Uh, it's an amendment to G-11, approval of substitute home instruction personnel. Judy Geraldo is listed, um, as bus driver. That could be changed to bus aide, and that's the only.
Okay, with that said, could I have a motion to approve G-1 through K-2?
Motion second.
Uh, so, we have Mrs. Satera and Mrs. Capiello as the second on that. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, what are the numbers? What we're taking on?
G-1 through K-2.
John, hang on.
Yeah, actually, I have a comment.
Sure.
Something we're going to have to look at in the future with respect to I-3, the extracurricular bus trips, because the cost on some of these is absolutely obscene. I mean, the three that stand out, we're paying $1,200 for a trip from Coltsneck to Madawan. From Freehold to Old Bridge, we're paying $950. Coltsneck to Holmdale's, $850. I mean, these are just ridiculous numbers.
Sean, maybe you could address that?
Yeah, and it's a, it's a trend that's been in place for a, a couple of years now that the, uh, outside contractors, transportation contractors, are, um, not as willing to take on additional work because of, um, health benefits, that would kick in, health benefits that they need to provide to their employees, so they are less available, um, for extracurricular games, trips of that nature. I will tell you that, uh, a, a large number of the routes, um, they're not, they're not routes per se, they're individual trips, that we did put out, uh, in this bid, and we took those bids earlier this week, or last week, rather, um, a lot of them, there were no bids submitted on, um, which presents a, a problem for us internally. As you know, we have our own bus fleet, um, we're about 60/40 in-house versus out contracted out, um, for to and from school routes. But our fleet is booked, uh, at that slice of time in the afternoon, doing home from school routes, so availability is limited. What we do is, um, our transportation director will work with the individual schools, uh, CCA's, to coordinate transportation, try and move games when that's available or, or practices, um, and, uh, reschedule or move them later, uh, and do the best we can to, to get kids to where they need to get to, uh, for these games. But it is a problem that has been growing over the last couple of years, and the prices we do get are robust, as you, as you pointed out.
Is that a phenomenon at the late schools or across all the schools?
Well, it's, it's, it's a, we have a two-tiered system, so it doesn't matter. I mean, a bus goes, does the early schools, then goes to a late school, so it's, it's, buses are not available for either that whole two-hour.
Can't change games.
Swap of time. But I, I know that, speaking to my colleagues in other districts, that they're experiencing a lot of the same difficulties in, uh, in getting their kids to the games and trips. And spring is particularly difficult, because the weather will throw the schedules, um, you know, throw them off, and they're in a constant state of rescheduling, as Mr. Bruno, you would know. Uh, so, it's particularly challenging to, to get that done. Um, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's becoming increasingly difficult.
So, may I have a motion to approve items?
We did.
Oh, we did the motion? Okay, we have it, so we have the second, we have the discussion roll call, please. Sean?
Mr. Bruno.
Yes. I, I'm abstaining from G-13 principal, assistant principals contract, um, not because I don't think you're deserving, but because I'm a conflicted board member, um, I think you folks work very, very hard and deserve a fair contract, so, good luck.
Mrs. Capi, Mrs. Capiello?
Um, yes on everything except, um, G-13, which I also abstain, and I, um, concur with what Pete said. I just really have a conflict, and that's the only reason. And I also abstain on, um, K-1. And I also abstain on K1 for Mr. Broberman, Mr. Sampson, and Dr. Hazel.
And I also abstain from K1, two professional conferences with Mrs. Sampson, and K1 for a professional conference for myself, to the New Jersey school boards.
I feel the same. I'm going.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Frankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sittera?
Yes.
Mr. Acetola?
Any new business from the members? Anybody who you want to talk about new business?
I just want to wish Mrs. Kozak a very happy retirement. God bless, God bless you. I've worked with you, a lot of folks I know that work with you, they admire you so much, and you're such an important part of Colts Neck High School. So, whatever you're going to do, do it healthy, do it well, and we'll miss you.
Debbie, if you get bored, you can come to Central State and push wheelchairs with me.
I get your job at the Atlanta Club. Too.
And Mrs. Kozar, you know, we go back a long way, long time. And when Mr. Land, the former principal, was leaving, I asked him, "Who do you think would be the best person for the job?" I'm telling tales out of school now, but he's retired, and I, you know, I'm outspoken on everything, that's the way I am. And guess who he said was the best person for the job? You. So you're going to be a great loss to the district, and I enjoyed working with you tremendously. You were always there, always responsive, and don't think I didn't appreciate it as a citizen and a board member. Thank you so much, and enjoy your retirement.
So, I'll share one story. We're at the military ball on Saturday night, and there was, there was a young man there who had, there was a, there was a moment where there was a dance, where you danced with any of your family that was there, moms, dads, you know? And there was one young man who didn't have any family there, and Miss Kozar went over and danced with him, so.
Nice.
That was Saturday.
Okay.
Oh, you know, Mr. President, I have something for new business, which I think circles back to what Mr. Sampson said about spending. The article I had sent you, Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
So basically, do you know?
The Westbury article.
Right, did you see what the numbers are?
I sure did.
So, your old hometown, Westbury, was crying that they spent $24,000 per pupil, right? That was the gist of the article, how bad they had it. And we spend 15, right? So, does that show you what's going on in the world?
It shows me that I pay an awful lot of tax for my 50-by-100 property out in Westbury. I can tell you that, it's about $20,000 a year.
Because basically, the article was, this high-spending district, Jericho, spends $37,000 a kid, and the one next store that spent 24 was up in arms that they're getting short-changed at $24,000, so.
Very good point. Thank you. Okay, let's have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
The second was, Jen, Hashi did the motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.